My morning meeting of 2022. I'll come with the roll call.
Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth Leo.
Here.
Al Kao.
Here.
Julie Pennington.
Here.
Emily Rogers.
Here.
Rick Chantner.
You.
Don Walters.
Here.
Would you believe her? Oh, we joined that by vote on remote. Bonnie's on the table here. I'll read the agenda and then we'll start with the first item.
Sorry, Jared, just. Just because the folks at home can't hear us as well.
Can you say now?
Actually, yeah. Yes.
Come on. Oh, Richard's here. Hello, Richard.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry for my tardiness.
We're going with the agenda. One public hearing scheduled for Walco on 100 State Street. The O U Special Department of General Business. We have a request for a minor modification to opportunity way. Another request for a minor modification 21, 25, and 27 Hancock Street. That will be the second one for that getting addressed. And then a request for a release of covenant also in 21, 25, and 27 Hancock School. A request for a minor modification of three lawyer with pride. Approval of minutes from November 2nd. And other updates from the chair and the planning director. We'll start with 100 State Street. They have asked to postpone their application. So we're not even gonna open it, but I do need a motion to well, continue it to January 1st. Ron.
Second.
Alden, second. And as we're on our vote, we have to do a voice roll call. Voting on this motion. Alden?
Yes.
Beth? Yes.
Uh.
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Richard?
My apologies. Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Okay, so we'll have that on the January 4th agenda. Now we'll go to general business. Request for minor modification at two opportunity way.
Jason, are you with us?
I am with you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Great.
Alden.
We had in preparation for this some concerns about the numbers on the square footage. So the vice chair and I asked Andy if he would show us a table of the of the approved square footage and a proposed change to square footage to give people context. And then Jason will let me go on with the application.
So this is just, this is not a significant application of the office's opinion during the change or government. But if you thought it might be helpful to break down our table, because the original decision way it was written seemed to conflate some of the numbers of the square footage that's happening to one use versus another. So this table was put together, in a little state of together with, trying to rule whichever our zoning administrators. To break it down a little clearer, you understand a little bit, or most be interested in the bygone probably screen or each square grid or assigned each of the subuses in the building. And some things that are not category in terms of square footage for any use there are something. There is also a few bigger followers and allowance or cap of two marijuana occupation businesses in this part. And a 100,000 square footage total cap. So just to the sense of what I know as well, it's only known that there's, there's only seven thousand square feet applied to the rental business right now. So between these two businesses, they're still below 100,000 square feet.
For some reason, I can't imagine why, given the vote last night, there is some, for some reason, some obstacle to the city council. Um, accepting the ease, we could come back to us at a future meeting and, and ask again for this. Um, you know, I would urge you as an attorney with your clients to, uh, invest on future clients. Uh, the need to look at the conditions of approval before it gets up to the wire. So we don't have to, we don't face this timeline much. Um, and I think that should take care of it for you. This is something I would listen to.
Well, I, I think there may be two things that I could then have shared with you. Um, the, the first concern I have is, um, and, and really what my initial response was going to be is. Now, I think, I think it would be appropriate, um, maybe, um, subject to the second comment I'm going to make, to provide some additional time for the city council to consider the acceptance of, of the, of the easement. Um, obviously, I would like to not have my client be obligated with that before the board, after the course of the year, if the city can still refuse. Multiple times over an extended period of time, um, to, uh, not accept the easement and would suggest maybe that the last sentence that we proposed. Remain in, but be tied to that course certificate of occupancy, that the city continues to refuse to accept the easement, that, that point, we're simply no longer obligated to provide it. The second concern I have, and this is more, um, sort of putting my conveyancing hat on. Um, as a, as a real estate attorney, the concern is, you know, my client has a reclosing schedule for the fifteenth. Uh, for, for three of these, uh, these units. Um, these are not, uh, condominium units in the sense that we're not dealing with, uh, units on, uh. Shared land that is going to be owned by an association, uh, by, by trustees. Um, he's conveying the interest in the underlying property. Uh, and so when he does that, he's conveying away the very interest in the lands that would be subject to the easement. So I suppose we could try and structure it in such a way that we would reserve to ourselves the easement for purposes of conveying to the city. It just adds and add a layer of complication. Once the properties are conveyed away. We no longer control the property that would be subject to the easement, which I think is probably why the condition was structured the way it was in the first place. That prior to conveyance of any interest to the plan, the party with complete control of the M V applicant, the developer would grant the easement. Uh, we would need to structure the deeds of conveyance for the individual units on the fifteenth. I guess to reserve to ourselves the easement interest so that we can then subsequently convey into the city. So. Maybe I've convinced myself we can do it, but it does add a, a layer of complication.
Stand that way. So just to be clear, the two parcels on the street where this easement would be. Um, in place are going to be closed for fifteen.
So, Madam Chair, I just got a lengthy explanation, but I think the short answer to your question is yes, that the interest, enters will be conveyed by end. Units on the left and units on the right, such that there would be interest in that underlying fee ownership that would be subject to the easement eventually, if the city accepts it.
Sorry for still, but then we'll take your comments afterward.
Um, so to be clear, are the two lots over there for?
Now you're going to get the more complicated answer.
If you're looking at the board of eleven court. What's this twenty-one, twenty-five, that's how we have. That's now. Cause it's. Scott Disney addresses. That's how twenty-five and Clark in two level court. There. That's one condo association. Because I was going to put them together for that speed one. It's not many. Right side twenty-seven gang car in one level court. That's another condo association. They have shared interest in the level court. That means they. I have closings on twenty-five hang on, which is unit C and I was all. Two level court, which unit D is probably able to know it's in the town. And then twenty-seven and five. Those are all closing on fifteen. So if you look at it technically, the condo association of twenty-five in block with all those two street trees. The condo association of twenty-seven, where on those, with all those two street trees. I don't mind having like a restriction on one level court with a release right now because that's probably one way from the goal. You know what I mean? So I don't know the legal charmation getting there, but I don't talk with that because. I find, why am I standing here with the city council? They pushed it out of that subcommittee. There was a little bit of a, a repeat, you know, see, all this stuff, I. My feeling is they're going to prove it. Like, who knows? I'm just thinking that it's going that way, and I understand you guys like, all right, I'm not going to let you get everything. It was just full of bad.
So, so the two lots, one on the left and one on the right.
Technically two condo associations with a shared interest.
I think it works for our purposes too. It would mean to use A- Adam's language, the, you know, the interest would be for both condo associations. It's a little clunky because there's only one unit of the four that's, that hasn't closed yet. And that's the quote unquote leverage that we have to make sure this gets sorted out. Either the city council approves the easement or they don't. We work for you to change the language. Um.
I mean, attorneys, I don't use the attorney, but ultimately I don't want to have the, like, we're on the fifteenth and all of a sudden we have a problem with the D. It's something hanging on. That would be my concern. That would be.
I'm awfully sorry that you had a closing so close to this getting resolved, but we have our. Processes and procedures and we have to go through this to make sure that everything's lined up.
So, um, I guess I, I would not support the. The continued inclusion of that, that new sentence. I would prefer to have the prior issuance of the fourth certificate. Sounds like that could be done.
So I, I think where we derive that from your Madam Chair is that, that, that yes, we, I think that can be resolved and we can make a further effort for a lengthier period of time. Um, to allow the city council to consider, further consider, reconsider the acceptance of the easement. My only point was that doesn't seem fair to my client and it doesn't necessarily seem like much is achieved. To require if, after those continued, continued efforts are made and we're on the brink of. Applying for seeking a force of your occupancy, you've still been unable to convince the city. Easement, that we then have to come back and have the same conversation again. I can tell you what I'm going to say if I'm back here in three weeks or in three months. I'm going to say the city councils had it for three weeks or three months. They still have refused to accept it and now we're asking that the condition be straightened. So. I have no issue with language in that second to last or the, the final existing paragraph. Where it currently references prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, it's saying that. The easement will be reported when city council approval is obtained, prior to the issuance of a fourth certificate of occupancy. I would just also like an additional sentence similar to the last one that we proposed that says, in the event that the city council does not approve this easement. Or acceptance by the city honored before the issuance of the fourth certificate of occupancy, this condition will have no further effect.
Let me just ask if the city council has, seems likely, proves it on Monday night. That's, is a unanimous recommendation from planning of the vote, that you heard one, one council, um, raise concern. But if the city council approves it on Monday night, um, does this resolve? Would my, see what the suggestion, suggested change, being anywhere to any to the board, resolve all your issues?
Is it would.
And actually, you, you probably wouldn't even need that change because you're not looking for a certificate of occupancy, you're looking for an approval.
That's correct. This, this is a moot point if on Monday evening, the certificate, the, the, uh, the city council approves the, the, the easement acceptance. It's, it's a moot point. We have a certificate of occupancy.
So my question to Andy would be. Do we have anything here that talks to the point, speaks to the point of? Should the city council accept it? Cause now we're, you know, the way this is worded, it's, you know, like the city council doesn't accept it. Should there be something else in here that captures what?
The city council, I said, on Monday, I don't expect it to be this foreseeable next week until the time of the pension, but I'm getting the sign of the city council. Um, it's itself, we look forward to that. Uh, I would expect it to happen, you know, within a couple of days. Uh, given that, uh, pretty quickly, uh, I'd have to prefer the council, obviously, on acceptance, but it, it has been recommended by the committee. Um, it does have a sponsor as well. Uh, the vice can, you know, uh, if you have any, uh, debate or, uh, if there's a lot of any debate, the council might have about it, but. It's what I expressed also, I think, by, uh, this one council, where they're just, you know, this, this is pretty, uh, that it's important the city had this to fit. To be able to maintain what is effectively issued free, even if it's, you know, located on private property, because the right way to have it on. So to me, it makes sense to, um, to, uh, to, you know, uh, it's very, that's when, you know, sort of push it out to the, the board here, good and well, I think that certainly gives time. Both of the council would consider on the twelve, which we get a part of the council, but it seems reasonable to expect that they would, uh, be in a position to, to figure the language that's been reviewed and. Um, you know, sort of consistent with the permit, uh, but also to allow the council, uh, VP to take a look at it again, again, or if for some reason there were, um, significant changes to that in some ways.
Okay, so, um, now my suggestion here is, um, to, to place the date December twelfth. And it should be honored before the issuance of the fourth certificate of occupancy. Does that work for?
Think if you want to keep that in.
No, that, that pushes it out to, it pushes the city council. To make a decision.
I, I think that's fair, Madam Chair, that if, if we're making Mr. Hinkers' suggested revision to the last sentence as it presently exists. So as to link the issuance of the, um, link the recording of the easement to the fourth certificate of occupancy as was suggested. My company's suggestion with that, the sentence we proposed, the new final sentence, um, would replace that reference to December twelfth, meaning. Would the reference to the fourth certificate of occupancy be consistent?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say. So that line would read, in the event the city council does not approve the easement for acceptance by the city. Honor before the issuance of a fourth certificate of occupancy. This condition will have no further effect and shall be deemed removed from the decision.
And I think it would just say honor before application for, for the fourth certificate of occupancy, correct?
Application. All right. That's where we are now. I just want to get this all sorted out before all of you who've been listening very patiently, um, chime in with what you think. Was appropriate for. Well. Sorry, we took that over forty, but. I don't know how else to do it. I just wanted to make sure that since you listened to all that, you don't hear anything that might be a problem.
What happened? I really think it's, the easement's important. Um. I guess, I guess I would like to. Encourage the city council to accept the easement. And I'm happy to go to the city council, see them happily. Um. I just, I, I don't like to give up on that. So this is what I'm saying. This, this, I think, is an important thing that we should be thinking about. When we have street and we, and development is required to provide street trees. And I, it's not, it's not the developer that I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about future property owners. We don't live here now, aren't part of this agreement. And so, uh, the only way we. Make sure that there are street trees here in the future is to have them in public street trees, which, which allows us to maintain and replace so. So, you know, I, I would prefer to go ahead without the additional sentence. And we visited, I, I just can't imagine the city council not approving this. And, but I hate to invest. Basically give them a, you know, I would like, I would like the city council to, uh. To be able to consider this seriously. And I, and I, again, I don't think that they're going to, uh, disprove it, influence something that we want to say is something that we want to have.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take the other point. I, I, I agree with the applicant's. Um, qualification and, uh, I'm the opinion, never say ever. And secondly, you can plead the orders or whatever. Have the worst street to order. So whatever reason, city council does not act timely or doesn't want to act. Uh, I don't see any reason why we need to have the separate thing from the voice again.
Anyone else want to speak? Make sure it's green.
Uh, I'm just curious about the potential timeframe or the, what's such a boycott. You know, we don't know for sure, but I, I'm just curious as to how much time that might give city council to get it together to accept it.
I would think. That's, excuse me, that's, that closes like six weeks or whatever. It's hard to think. By then, it should all be flushed out. We're either going to say yes, no, I'm going to imagine. Yeah, I can't guarantee you're going to say yes, but it's not. I naturally would.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? All right. I will, I'm asking for a motion to deem the request minor and approve the minor modification. Request as amended tonight.
And, uh, do you mind verifying it tonight? Does it mean the language proposed by the applicant or by? And then secondly, if it is approved, obviously it's a point, but it's not approved, assuming that one is, uh. Uh, is asking for, does that mean, um, we've got to do this again some other time?
No, we'll revisit it. If it doesn't pass on this motion, we will revisit the line right away.
Thank you.
Okay. So let me just read the end of, um. The easement retrieve, uh, maintenance along Hancock Street is in the decision. And I'll start at the point where it says, um. Said provision shall be reviewed and approved by the director of planning and development. And proof of proper recording shall be provided to the zoning administrator. Prior to the issuance of the fourth certificate of occupancy. In the event the city council does not approve this easement for acceptance by the city. Honor before an application for the fourth certificate of occupancy. This condition will have no further effect and shall be deemed removed from the decision. That's what we're voting on. May I have a motion?
So.
Thank you, Don. Second. I'll second. Heather. Samuel Paul Alden.
I've accused myself as I'm in the butter.
Beth.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Heather, yes. Rick, so, Don, Wes, Richard.
Yes.
Yes. We have both votes to approve it as, um, as a amendment.
I do.
This is the request for a minor modification, also for the same, uh, properties. Uh, having to do with. The elements.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
All right, um.
Would you like me to provide an overview?
Well, we had another discussion about this at our meeting and we had thought that we might propose, uh. A different, uh, discussion about inconsistencies between the layout and utilities plan and the approved decision. And the, um. Partial as-built plan that was submitted dated November twenty-first. So there's a little, back there's a little question on that, which is. Maybe we should clear up before we should get into the expense discussion.
So we're happy to do that, Madam Chair. Uh, Steve Sawyer, the project engineer is present. We had a present tonight. Uh, we were going to have a present anyway, but particularly when I saw the way they exchanged the emails identifying. The inconsistency and asking questions. I've spoken to my client about that. I've made Mr. Sawyer aware of it, so we'll. Yield the floor to you, but then we're happy to address it once you, uh, discuss the inconsistencies that are concerning to you.
And can you pull it up please? Or at least they have the, um, pull up to his side. I'll let, I'll let Rick found it, um, since I'm going to let him, uh, describe the concern.
Actually, I'm not sure, um, how much the concern it is, but, um, you look at the, uh, approved plan. Uh, and the back unit, which I guess is one, that it worked on, like, um, that just had a, a landing in the step. During, and, um, the, uh, as built, as you see here on the field, it has a concrete wall constructed. That looks like it might be a race patio, a future race patio or something like that. And, um. So I just raised the question as to, uh, how discrepancy like this gets approved or how it requests for, and how it changed. In plans like this gets done. Is this something that, um, happens at the administrative level? Does it have to be approved, uh, by the boards that approve this site plan? Um, the record book is on board and the bank board, um, saw this site plan as part of their. For the approval process. So I just wanted to, really clarify that, figure out what the actual processes are.
But there was also a content issue. We were affected by the stormwater, um, plans that are.
I think that was resolved.
That has been resolved.
We did hear from the senior engineer. We did inquire about that before that.
This is a dangling issue. It's dangling out there because it's just that all of a sudden that, a partial asphalt that we not seen. So, um. I didn't want to, because it's.
Uh, okay. Speaking of it, generally speaking, I spoke with Jennifer earlier today. Uh, my understanding and the, I think, of course, some experience on this is that it may require this whole work of deals concluding some point named, that is the. Uh, what about the component of course, a lot of say of their, um, per se, but, um, then it's a new core of the tool which focuses on the driver and the lowway. Uh, that would, uh, in my opinion, would, uh, require going back to importance to the formality of a minor modification, uh, to reconcile the fact that there's something built that doesn't, you know, according to the original plans. Uh, that being said, it doesn't look like there was more added in perspective, you know, in the obvious direction, it's something that we opposed. Uh, but it just does seem to be both city interest, you know, the output interest for making that more alive, cool, of something that is, uh, right down, consistent with the plan in the previous.
Proceeding, then we asked for that to be sent over.
Oh, we're pretty sure I've run that, but that was our statement, really. I don't know, we should, they're very hostile, we don't know about that since then.
No, thirty, Madam Chair. I've, I've not had an opportunity to speak to her because these emails came in rather late today. You know, I, I. The only, the only point on which maybe I disagree of that is, um, whether the nature of this sort of a change triggers the need for, and again, I don't think spoken to Jennifer as of yet. Uh, triggers the need for a modification, even if it's a minor modification, it's only for. Uh, certainly I would concede, as I see it happen often, uh, both for private and municipal clients. If there's a structural change to something that's been approved, um, by a zoning board, by a planning board, um, generally the plan is, in this case, a lot of say so. The plan has been incorporated by reference to the approval. And so if you make a structural change, even if it's a minor change, something that rises above the level. Real change or shifting something a couple of inches doesn't hit ledge, you've got to come back before the board. Um, patios don't qualify as structures even in your zoning. So the question becomes, when you're modifying a patio, if this were a project that had been permitted by way of special permit. Twenty-five years ago and was on its third owner and the, the owner of record, if one of the units came out and enlarged their patio, would they be expected to come back to the zoning board? Amend a twenty-five-year-old special permit? I guess if nobody'd be watching and they probably wouldn't. Obviously, this is a little different. It's a new project, it's still under construction. If, if it requires mon- minor modification, we'll submit an application for minor modification. Those are generally routine. Um, but I did see the correspondence with Mr. Christensen, where he said that he didn't anticipate this would have an issue from a stormwater perspective. And he provided a fairly lengthy explanation as to why.
Okay, that's just what I wanted to clarify. Um, risking any violations of, um. Regulations incorporated into the original decision. Okay, great. Would you like to go ahead with your covenant?
Not for long. Thank you. Uh, so, Madam Chair, thank you. Um, we have made a request. There were conditions of all three of your approvals, the two. Special permits that I made reference to earlier, as well as the, uh, definitive subdivision, the subdivision decision. Uh, to the need for a covenant. The covenant was specifically, uh, required in connection with the, the court or lane. Uh, the condition reads, a covenant shall be entered into between the owner or developer and the city. In a form acceptable to the planning board prohibiting the issuance of an occupancy permit until such time as the court or lane has been constructed. In accordance with the approved plan, the output shall comply with this requirement. And again, I think it's verbatim in the special permit decision that it might be slightly different. Uh, in the definitive subdivision decision. So our next two requests are really related one to the other. The first is. Really just the modification of that condition to allow for the applicant to provide a different form of surety to the board upon approval. And then, of course, the request that we're making is to submit a different form of surety in exchange for a payment or release of covenant. Uh, that different form of surety would typically be, you know, bond cash account, something that provides the board and the city with sufficient funds, typically whatever's left. Um, I'm sure you see this often, maybe not with subdivisions, but I see it in many of my communities and many communities which I do work. Developers want to put up, you know, one point five million dollars in cash at the start, so they covenant into development, they get the roadway in, they get the grain. Uh, they come back with, it's a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars worth of work left and they bonded and they have the public release, so they begin to sell subdivision bonds. We're asking for really the equivalent here. And so to that end, we've been in communication with city staff. Uh, we provided an initial estimate as to what we, what we had left and what we thought the approximate cost of those items would be. Uh, that list was sent out to your, uh, consulting engineer, Mr. Christensen. Uh, he responded, uh, with some comments and some questions and some issues of concern. Um, I have that exchange here. It occurred over the past several days, dating back to last week. Um, in his email of December second, which was Friday, uh, he says, um. Should be noted that the remaining work estimate, referring to the estimate that originally been provided by Mr. Saw, Sawyer, is for the work required to complete the approved plan. He then comments on some grading and drainage, drainage issues that he has also corrected. He provides a bit of an explanation in the emails as to what those are. He says that, um, there's also a need for an as-built plan and that was not included, the cost of preparation. Uh, in the original estimate that we provided. So he says that the grade, the grading and drainage issues were approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. The has-built plan could cost as much as ten thousand dollars. So that was an additional thirty-five thousand onto the original estimate, which was fifty-eight five. Um, that total was ninety-three five. And then he said. Easy to end this, that if not his money, uh, listen, round it up to a hundred thousand dollars, and even, and even six figures. So, uh, so that's fine. Uh, Mr. Sawyer reviewed it. I thought that that was appropriate. Uh, I spoke with my client about it. Um, I don't think he's happy, but says, he says it's acceptable. Um, and so that's what we're requesting, that we can provide, um, that form of surety for a hundred thousand dollars, uh, consistent with the, the breakdown that. Now seeing on the screen, which is the revised estimate that Mr. Sawyer provided, uh, to be consistent with the requests that were made by your consulting engineer. And so that's, that's the last of these two requests is to amend these conditions to allow this to be provided and then to release the covenant.
From the board, thank, okay, concerns, questions?
Now, this, this rule is in this.
This is the release, this is the covenant itself.
Covenant.
The next discussion is going to work.
Uh, well, actually, so covenant is in subdivision ruling or whether it's special permit?
All three.
All three.
Special permits and ones.
So that's.
I'm saying mine and then we. So that language would lead. So that language would lead, um, in addition to the, um, language that's in there, or maybe it's a change. The covenant shall be released in occupancy permits issued upon providing a bond in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
That's fine, then I guess I would just add to that, Madam Chair, you know, a bond or cash account to provide flexibility. My client prefers to write a check for a hundred thousand, uh, for the city might prefer to receive the check for a hundred thousand. Or whether it's bonded or the funds are provided, um, you'll have the money's available to you.
And that's the reason why I asked, if I'm not mistaken, under MGL, when it's a subdivision, the applicant has sole right to, to provide either cash or whatever, like, credit or assured bond. Uh, in this case, so for the subdivision, personally, I don't think we have, I think I would comment. The only comment I have with the other two special permits is, and I don't necessarily have an issue with that, in my opinion, we're setting precedent. So let's come to again, and it's a special permit, not a subdivision. And an applicant said, "Why wouldn't put a surety bond in?" Then I, I, I think we're, uh, we may be giving this arbitrary and prejudiced. And the reason I mention is, you can talk all day about, oh, surety bond, just as good as cash, or whatever, but let her figure out, man, it's not. It's an insurance company trying to collect it, and people will tell you, yes, it happened, you have all the venture money, but I've been on the other side many times, protection, it doesn't happen, so simply word of caution, I, family, I'll probably go with, so, later on.
So let me just say that this is standard operating procedure for previous situations like this, right? And accepting bonds all along.
Uh, well, I think to Don's point, I, I agree with the point, I guess, maybe, like, the board, I know, uh, I have a strong, uh, preseness. But I, I agree with the point that Don is making, which is that on the subdivision, you don't necessarily have to leverage shooting windows here into, I guess, the, I understand that point, um, cash is capable, so to speak, and more, 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 my direct, I work with, you know, just saying. Um, that's preferable from the city's perspective, because essentially you have the city chasing after, you know, folks to provide those funds in accordance with the law as opposed to working on a surety versus having cash in the account, which is, you know, much more logical, the right leverage for someone to clean something because they want that one back. So, um, yeah, I, I agree generally, this is something I can sort of always have to something to pull up. It's just that it doesn't, it doesn't apply that, it's more leveraged, the velocity, sort of, we're out of our way of doing it, uh, in banks and attorneys and everything.
But are we really worried that this is gonna be a problem?
I never
And we should, I'm asking the board, that we should require on the special covenant, Chair?
In my opinion, never say never, but again, subdivision control, dangerous, we have no discretion. Firstly, if it's needed for special permits outside of subdivision control, I would require either, you know, cash in an SRO account, that's, that's controlled by the city, at least as, 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 you know, things are completed, or they call it, ever roll, full letter, credit, I think.
Madam Chair, I may be able to short circuit the discussion a bit if I could. Um, this is part of the reason why we proposed specifically a cash account or a bond, and we didn't play around with letters of credit or things of that sort, because I've had those experiences myself on that side of the table. Um, having said that, I've just spoken to my client, we can take the bond off the day of what does, certainly. My client's intention is to write a check to the city, uh, for the funds that be held in cash, and then release the bond completion improvements.
Perfect. As a case, we'll do it. Done. Okay, but before we take a vote on this, uh, do you have a question?
This is a question, um, in the case of the subdivision, first, I was saying, do we at the decision, actually, I would say, for the subdivision decision, and we can, we can be more specific for the special permit decision. Perhaps in the subdivision decision, you need to have the, get the options that are required by state law.
So three, Madam Chair, so I would tell you, if I were counseling the board, that, um, Mr. Walter's comments are correct, and under chapter forty-one, section eighty-one U, the choice of surety is solely the applicant's. Um, having said that, many boards, some of which I represent, uh, choose to require specific types of sureties in their, in their decisions. Um, you've done that in your decision here, um, I don't necessarily intend any harm in doing it in a different way. Um, by amending it now, if you prefer to say solely in the subdivision decision, that a form of surety consistent with forty-one eighty-one U be provided by the applicant, you could say that instead. If you want to get specific and say specifically that it's going to be a cash account, you've already heard me say on the record that that's what we're gonna provide, so we have no preference. Maybe, but, uh, I, I would think if you're given the applicant has agreed, there's, you can see, you can go to the board a little more uh, with the language represented there, go consistent and recognition that the applicant's agreed to that more than the subdivision, that would be just how.
All right. Any other questions before I ask for a motion to, uh, for this minor modification? And approve, this is a minor modification, and the minor modification, as a, then I have a motion. Rick, okay, second. Heather, you know, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know what you're doing, I'm gonna ask you to repeat all this back to me tomorrow. All right, uh, take a roll call on that. Alden?
I'll recuse myself.
You, um, Uzil, Beth, yes. Bob?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Heather, yes. Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
So that is true for the content placement language. Finally, the request for the release of the covenant. I'm sorry, that was covenant language, sorry. So I'm just gonna read from this, I'll let, I turn it across to this presentation.
Sure, that's why my, my presentation, Madam Chair, is, is brief. So we have a form of release of covenant to be prepared, uh, it's a standard form, you've seen it before, uh, simply stating that the covenant that issued of the property, uh, is being released by virtue of a vote of the board. Um, and of course, you've got the condition requiring another form of surety. So, uh, presumably before you release to us the release of covenant, uh, you will require proof to be provided to you, the alternative form of surety. So my client's energy provides the check for a hundred thousand dollars in exchange. You hand over the release of covenant, which gets recorded, I have a chain of titles, so that I can change the new files.
Andy?
Uh, my good, I don't think it's a steady issue, but I just, uh, we want to know, I think, that draft was provided to the planning board, includes language that might be revised prior to, uh, execution by the chair, or this, granted, was, I don't necessarily think any problem, uh, no issue with it. But, um, it says that the, uh, work had been fully completed, I think, of the applicant's justice, just to clarify, because that's not the current status. Um, in this case, there's a cash that would be held, so I just believe that that, the slide was, it didn't do justice before in front of the sheriff's signature, and then the back, oh, the certain ones.
And Madam Chair, we could include language that says, you know, have been completed or an alternate form of surety provided to the board, to the satisfaction of the board, um, for all applicable odds.
Agreed.
So I, my question is, should the motion, our motion on this reference the, um, a hundred thousand dollars subsidy? It was, was the motion included or requested release of covenant? Should it say something like, upon receipt of surety?
Yes, I would say upon receipt of, and, uh, recognizing, you know, again, if it's, you know, moved out of letting, so to speak, that formally covenant be revised, as submitted to, uh, to move the language, which are very positive, which is, you've had to count for that instead of letting it, that's what it works for.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve the request for release of covenant upon, uh, on receipt of surety and revised language we have discussed tonight. Something to that effect, but it's close enough to capture those two points. And honor as the planning or chairing sign of the renewed covenant. That's why I need a motion. Rick? Second? I'm, somebody else.
One second.
No one's counting. All right, uh. Alden?
I'll recuse myself.
Uzil? Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yeah.
Danny?
Yes.
Heather? Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And yes. So, motion varies.
Thank you for, uh, appreciation.
Our next order of business is the request for a minor modification of Fred Doyle's ride. And we have a lot of people leaving, I hope for yours, there are. Okay, so, um, I'll ask, um, the applicants to please introduce themselves and present with the help of any visuals that Andy can pull up for us. Um, good evening, my name is, oh, sorry, you're gonna have to reveal this, pull it down and look what I'm doing, stick it in your face. Yeah.
Uh, my name is Judith Burke, I'm the property owner of Fred Doyle, who wants to
Well, to receive, I'm the executive manager of Cerberus. We can do it all. So, pretty much, I'm sure, the, this bird like that, that is, she has an existing deck, it's twelve foot by twenty-one feet. She'd like for the new season porch on top of, part of it, so on, on twelve to fifteen. On that, she'd like to turn it into a new season porch. There are footings in the ground, with, you see, um, precast footings, big foot bottoms. It would not have to do any, there's no excavator need to be done. It would just come up on the, if you're looking at this picture on the right side, it's about eighty. Then go over to the roof line, you can see the existing roof line, and it would come over as small slab of the rubble. That's pretty much the, the long and short of what she would like to do.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for a comment with a question, will we have enough information to fully review this application, make a decision?
Question is, is some engineer confirmed the footings, because now, where was the deck, you know, certain dead bone in the library? Now, when you have the deck, and maybe you also have a room, you have live load, I, you still, so you actually have got more loading up there, and so someone, how do we, that, someone do that?
It wasn't engineered, it wasn't done by an engineer, for him. I agree, it haven't done by an engineer, but it's pretty in layman's terms, doesn't layman. Those are precast floors, footings, that way, they have been to the bottom, it's on the bottom. It meets passcode.
I, I understand that, uh, you know, I just hate to see a situation where something ever happened, and we truly know, we come back to us and say, well, we're taking it forward, we didn't ask my question, but, uh, again, as I said earlier, we can leave the portion of what you're looking at, so if you're aware of that, the owner is, then, um, I'd be happy to, thank you.
Yeah, I will say, some new development out, uh, for the street, the, the where that's the house is, uh, a year old. And people have looked at, but it's perhaps holding the existing deck, so everything is bolted into the house, and it's the, uh.
If I may, yeah. Uh, my understanding is, and I, I agree with Josh Boyd, uh, I think the building commissioner's office, under the building code, uh, would be responsible for verifying the subject, so, to me, there is a mechanism, and especially with plenty more Jersey, so it's, but it's a valid concern that raises, and would be held on, on that goal department to give the verticals a change, and that goal perfectly submitted, uh, apparently, you know, uh, it don't have to be verified, and that's specifically, I thought, that.
But the building department, be looking for engineers, would you?
Sure, sure, yeah, so, uh, your question
I, I understand what you're saying, but there's, there's no evidence that, that any of that has been heard of. Uh, the foundations are adequate, that, that, you know, what are the loads that we're getting, bones, that we've got, instructions, and I would think the building department is a point of engineering review and a standard one, and verification of this stuff.
Sure, I, I would agree with that one hundred percent, um, I almost speak for the building measure, but I would certainly, I expect that one hundred percent. Uh, I, you know, just to say that, I guess, being, um, you know, to be shared, but you have enough to, to, to include something, I don't know, it's stable, uh, application, so to speak, you know, uh, here, obviously, if you're going to the building department, you know, where you're going, things like that, or anything else, when they're here, or when they're starting to sign, it's you know, all about the same, so, I don't know.
But I have a question, and we'll leave this meeting, we'll, uh. So has a building permit application been filed for this? Start perfectly, building, application started, they sent us this. Was there a denial? Because one of the things I'm concerned about is that you're in the rear yard setback, and I know that, I noticed, I wasn't part of the original rule of the subdivision, but the existing structure is also in that, it just occurred to me that this may require the zoning board review, and I wasn't sure if that was, if the if that was part of the determination, was this in a determination that this was the only relief that was required?
Uh, it was, I think, determined that this was the only reason required, this is an OSRD where the playing board had granted, has the, the grant relief.
Oh, I see.
Similar to a variance, but through a special permit process, a little free line, uh, easier, uh, and, uh, and this is, I think that's why she determined to get, not uh, consult on this one, like a global lot somewhere else, this becomes on the west end, um, but here, uh, just the playing board, you know, so.
Okay.
So, I hadn't run up a hill, said, oh, sorry, or, okay, I see, thank you.
This, this is a good example of where, um, I recommend that everybody look at the controlling legislation in formal language, so that you can start to understand what the different types of special permits, um, are, on which they are, the information that they are based on, and the regulations that they're based on. It's a good way for a specific application to, um, start to learn distinction between maintenance space, residential side, and any of those, right? I ask that question because I'm very surprised that we don't have any visuals whatsoever, no elevations, no formal, um, or even informal, uh, visuals to tell, show us what this is gonna look like. Because if I were living on either side, I would want to know what, what this structure is gonna do in terms of my, um, view, of my, my, my unit. And certainly, from the planning board's point of view, we really do need to see what it's gonna look like. Um, and something more than just, you know, a hand-drawn, um, uh, illustration. So I don't know, does anyone else feel, like, this is an, I'd be not really watching?
No, I agree, Madam Chair, I agree that this is unreg, irregular to have such a loose sketch. I would argue for more defined drawings that have a better way of perceiving and understanding the architecture that's being submitted.
Anyone else, does anyone else, um?
I, I agree. I agree also.
And I just think that we, we can see something that will give us and the abutters an opportunity to more than just imagine, but visualize, but, that's And speaking of the abutters, um, I was, found it curious, the language in the letter that was proposed to them, it said, they had been informed, would they please sign? What we need to know is that abutters do not disobey, or to put it more positively, abutters approve the, the proposal. And so I would recommend that you ask them to sign a different document that says specifically that they approve the proposed structure that you had built there. And then it'll be really clean, and everything happens, and this is the rule that I believe is supposed to be the series. Um, that those documents are right. So anything else that anybody would like to see from the applicant before we ask for a continuation? So, our next meeting is on January So, our next meeting is on January fourth. I don't know. The board's next meeting is on January. Would you be prepared to have all of that information available for it? Would you like to go out to the second meeting in January? Holiday is notwithstanding. So, we go basically speaking to the line, I'm just. We need to go to the zoning board, now what? No, 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 I have to go back to the next. We want you to come back to this meeting with the visuals. If you can get us some engineering information that will reinforce what you already mentioned informally, that would be great. But the two important things for us, because we know the engineering information will come through the building permit process, are the, what it's, what it's going to look like. And the letters from the abutters says, we agree or approve. The proposed structure that we're going to build on the back of your home.
Okay.
If I could just to go about the process between elements, you can know the open door system, which I've heard across this online, it's generally known, I think, expanded some of this. The plan discussion is that the hands got to upload it here, you can basically upload the document to that, that will show that updated set of drawings. If you talk to Caitlin in the office, I'm playing with them, we can provide you essentially samples, again, to the board's question here, things that are, you know, done by architects, where it shows very clearly those improvements. They can give you samples of prior plans, it doesn't have to be exact set, you know, or until that, but it does give an idea of what the board's looking for. And then it does keep that up, so we come back here, know everything they need, on the elevation sheets, and on a site plan that shows a lot, and where this is in there, just to work.
Okay, so I will take a motion to continue this application to January fourth.
So, will Alden?
Alden and second, I'm gone. Hello, Alden?
Yes.
Beth? Yes. Amy?
Yes.
Heather? Yes. Rick? Yes. Don? Richard?
Yes.
Hi, Bonnie, yes. So they'll, they will see you on January fourth.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have approval of minutes for November second. I'll take motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
August? Second?
Second.
Beth? In terms of edits, Caitlin's learning her way, and Rick and I have helped her, I know, with some of the formatting, the wording. And if anyone else did submit anything, did anyone else submit anything, or have anything you want to bring up tonight, in terms of content? Just help her along as much as we can, so please do read them, and if you see anything with content blogs anywhere. She'll be submitting that for her, or bringing it up to the board, which will. So, we will consider this approval minutes as amended. And I'll take the role on. Alden?
Yes.
Beth? Yes. Bob?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Heather? Yes. Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Richard?
Sorry, yes.
I, yes. Okay, so the minutes that are approved. So now, we have updates from the chair, the planning director, Andy, one thing on the agenda for us. Discussion of department obligations and input. I think you better clarify what you're talking about.
Sure, thanks, and I, I asked, I have to add, why were you there? I thought it was you, during the meeting. This issue came up, I think, which is why most of them, like, basically, hey, I should treat the situation, because we had some fair amount of back and forth with this thing, but. Long story short, you know, permitting is very complicated, I'm not going to go into that, but permits, permits are complicated. In, in the regular, like, some orders, there is before, it's used, or in glasses. And sometimes, this board is pressed by applicants to rush, you know, Google or something, if you're trying to work on, I wouldn't drive, be tried, by the way, since I started working here. One of the changes that they're trying to make done for the planning board, and right with all of ours, is to try to help on draft and conditions, and then assuming for you. So you don't have to start, you know, strategy, that's a start, as comprehensive as possible. Obviously, there's always something to be improved upon, but try to draft those in advance, that's how this can be done, and that's why you see. Draft findings, and we're going to staff the board, draft conditions, or credit for you, for consideration, because that's just to speed that up and make it very, you know, fun done. But what happens sometimes is you see applicants, or you're rushing to get something approved, and so, they're asking you to close out tonight, and they're asking you to sometimes adapt your condition from apply, to address a mission, and then the way is for. Address based on that night meeting, so the board does its best, you know, where our best, you know, who owns and adapt there. Here, in the case of the handbacks, be a true situation, we've got, I think, a work out by here, tonight, that just by example, what that came up there was, turning lead, which was like, you know, you would use there. She had included language in there, saying, the city's all getting paid in streams, and I, and I said, I don't think that's actually, the board was attending there, she was having to move that into the decision. As was written, but it wasn't a hundred percent, the board wasn't saying exclusively, you know, it's not an obligation. So, my point here is just that the board can't be expected, especially involved in the board, you know, although some of you are professionals, or are into field events, or the last experience, or the word of the law, that. You obviously can't expect everything to be told this, but to basically just summary review, and summary for a question that came from my local councilors, it was understandable. Why do we end up with these problems sometimes, where something seems like this, you know, not the perfect situation, or, you know, the visual? And that's because, you know, there, there, for instance, in that discussion, was suggesting, why, why does the board just continue to hear it again, and give the language perfectly fun done? And, and I tried to explain that this is the reality to deal with, is that it's better to act as where our permit process is better in play for all time. The applicant's pressing to get a quote of the actual permit process, they're the ones that are saying, brush, and try to do something here, and then they, you know, they're coming back and going, saying, well, we can adjust this. That's partly because the applicant was asked, and the first way for a right currently to know, and the board to try to adapt to them, and the rest of us says. Here, there's sometimes, he's a deep point, they could run apart this, and so here, what I tried to do, in fact, with the third B, was just clarify that. Yes, there was a prior for Easton, but that does not mean, there can be needed to have this, because that's an obligation, same thing like trees. In, in who that she adjusted the language, and it's very possible, right, the language we adjust here, if it's helpful, to make it explicit there. That it was a right from the city's part, it's been taken, it was a special, without obligation. We want to see, here, Russ from the planning board, along with board, by way of her, if they make sense, in the context of who's there. We do want to see it, Russ, upon the city, as an obligation for other departments, we had not got any confirmation from what you, get any confirmation from, or they would actually be responsible. Actually, you know, that was a complaint, some of those persons having the option to do so. So it's just, it's one of those things, we had some investigation on holding on the sidewalk, where the applicant was going to write their approvals, they said, add a sidewalk for your request. But they hadn't allowed time for it, and they were rushing to go people, so they don't have to drive it, so. They wouldn't, didn't allow enough time, question that the sidewalk, and traffic improvements for the crosswalk, and it was public, it didn't actually provide a true connection across those, in that location. And that was what the concern was raised, I don't know, whether you, private department, public services, and that became a question, some of the council, because the city that had to do some improvements across the street. Effectively, in order to solve that crossing. So here, the solution, in part, might have been, you know, save the applicant, but you might need a continuance here, if you're going to give us a sidewalk connection. You, you can't expect us to close tonight, and say, if your sidewalk out of nowhere, and solve that problem, you need to come back to us, and show us that it's a proper crossing of both streets. And the only way to do that is to have a continuance, and get a revised plan, or any confirmation, city officials, and they also do this, you know, and have to do that. The applicants don't always want to, you know, a lot of time, and that because it means extending their right hearing, and others, because of the world, it's going to be. And that's the question you want to deal with, is trying to now tell those, like, how long do we spend in the permit process, or something, how long can you make that a process? Versus trying to adapt, or maintain conditions that are, a lot of the world, like, for someone having to adapt, in a specific instance, and we get after it, but. Try to coordinate, and try and participate, and, and make any assumptions, because here, make any assumptions about what our departments can do. Or that if this occurs, I think, try to, that's also a lot of the around, you know, freedom, so. So, any questions on the going, is anybody wanting to flag, just the fact that, as we're drafting special conditions, and we should be thinking about, does this, is this assumed in place of obligation, anybody? Have you done it, with parties, if I can get on something, you know, public services, crossing, or a sidewalk, or something like, you know, it might. Who wants to get a little feedback before approving something, if it takes more time, I realize the applicant's thought was, I've never answered, but. Sometimes that gives a better result, you know, the day, and results must not sort of fall around later on, and that's just someone, sometimes not changing, no matter how much power they're in. That is what I added to this thing, but.
Yeah, there's history that goes back several years, outside of individual applications. And that is, was perception, and sometimes the reality, that the CBA and the planning board were. Being told what to do on the app. And I think. We, we corrected that. We've been very clear, when we felt that they were pushing us on something, and this is a particular situation. That Andy's referring to, that we, you know, got tonight, also had a lot, not a lot, but, you know, more recent years. So I guess my messages don't feel like, just because they've got a hose, they've got a deadline. That we have to affect Kate, to compromise our standards. And. There's nothing that says that we have to admit when there was pressure coming out. And I just think we're doing a whole lot better at it. And first, the planning office, Andy can push back, but it's better if board members do it, better, not just the chair, or, you know, one of the people, or anybody. Comes in and says, now, we're not ready to make this decision, we need to do it whatever. Just people encourage them, so, do what you know is best.
And I think there are two different things, there was, what happened during the building process, was, might happen to the projects. So, and I know that there had, there used to be times when, we wanted, very disturbing to, where the developer came in the last night, and said. I can't do what I said I was going to do, we'll do this instead, the planning board needs all pressure to approve it. But, and that's a long handle, but we. I think that we, that you're, you're pointing about not being pressured to act, if they're not ready, is, is very important. Second part, which is after the approval, and then somebody comes, and they've got a closing, they want you, us to act in an unusual way. Just to move the closing deadline, is something that, you know, I feel they should be grown up enough to, to manage the project. But if they can't be grown up enough to manage the project, I wonder if there's a way through open, to send periodic reminders, automatic reminders, saying. You've got these conditions that are under approval, remember them, you know, if, if, I, I would look ahead, if you had to do. If we set something up, open up, so every month, something went out to the developer, saying, don't forget, you've got a budget for the city council. And they get eleven in a row, then they come to us a week before a closing, and say, you can say, no, forget. Because, because you've been warned another time, you're a student. I wonder if that's possible, you know, because, that, you know, it's just like babysitting a toddler, but that's the way these developers work.
I, I agree entirely with both the chair and vice chair, it's the case tonight, that we're going to recover here, it's round. And it's not to say that I, I don't have any arbitrary reasons for going, you know, whether or not, or, you know, quote or not. But whether or something's definitely matter, you know, in this case, the applicant did have a fair amount of time to come into the line, to sit with the council. It was a self, you know, you only created, you know, a deadline or a rough, or closing, you know, they rushed, essentially, and played with a bunch of copies, going with their first office, their third office, and my office. Because they had just had a discussion with Jennifer, about trying to get a sign on the occupancies, and realized that they had to close that wood, and whether that's on the developer, the attorney, doesn't matter, it's going, they owe that. And they were essentially creating a scramble, everybody, go off, your office, city council, and planning board here, trying to scramble around, modifying, saying, we had plenty of time to do that. I, I don't think that's actually fair to, you know, the other parties involved, it's not, it's disrespectful, the amount of time that you have to spend, trying to do both right and the city. So I, I do think it's important to deal with, you know, sometimes you have to say no, you have to say, well, it requires a little more time to get this right. And it's sometimes better to do that upfront, than, you know, the problem that life was all the wrong, just because they're in a hurry, and. The, the, the argument that you get, you know, that, well, we front away, don't, don't characterize it one way or another way, that, you know, the last, you know, the medical argument, like. Here, that trees, with, there's open to one exit, they're coming, and running a lot earlier, and not even this one, they're here. As to the online, we can officially effectively do that right now, we expect to be able to do something like that better in the future. The problem primarily is just that, because every condition, you know, we need, it, part of it's waiting to open up to act more future, which say there are some explaining, things on, it's something, break news of all those things. Part of it's the fact that it doesn't violate the main work, it's just got the, depending on how specific we're dealing with the reminders, you have to do that now. I don't think that, you know, we should take that on a certain liability responsibility for doing that, saying, there's something, saying, you know, plenty of other involved developments, should be able to handle these things, deadlines expressed in two thousand and one, twenty-fourth of one, maybe that's time to come back here. There's always a way to do that, however, we certainly will, we have to act that, you know, surrounding each event, going forward, when it all does, has that possibility, plus food, so.
Do you have a list, are you making a list of, like, special permits, the site plans, that company closed up?
We're working on how to best sort of tagulate that on an automated way, so in the past, we usually have something, we have spreadsheets, something where it's, you know, it's been. What we're trying to, sort of, along with, is, you're really hurting to clear it out, and, and be able to see the major category, so. We do, it is in the system, but it isn't a spreadsheet, different between the office, it's actually, we're using now the open dump system to see where those things are. And you can see essentially now, in some of this, we stand on the middle side, but the applicant was able to step in, if they're in, who's done sign offs, who hasn't, and they're going to get a notification, that there's a reason why they didn't do the sign off. Well, you didn't, you know, pay it back, or you didn't revise something, or adjust something, the one department had to sort of. We, we're trying to set up steps now, and I think things have been a little bit spending, you know, in terms of, I believe, and I don't think they've been around to improve before that as well. But the, what we've had here now, is actually, we're trying to make sure that the sign offs are done in the right sequence, so you don't have accidents, or something, before it's got the proper sign off, when required by the board, or, you know. We try to make sure that those things don't happen, because I know, certainly, by time, where complaints about, you know, permits are, board permits, and their condition, obviously, in respect to the firm, building department. Will do a lot of the permits, and so, there's been a much more appreciation of that, and most of the required building history. There's an understanding that, you know, those are inherent requirements for that building, permit side of things. Whereas in the past, they have been less willingness to report, so that's actually part of the reason why the six thousand three, somebody mentioned in the vision, was basically separate this, well. Frank, I think it's two hundred and, two hundred and ten, with one version, the whole, the whole several tools, in the, areas of work anyway. But here, it's kind of, because we have, I think, actually, it's more, more than one person, it would effectively over time, with everything that's going on. But it allows us to make sure that someone's actually monitoring those conditions, and making a generate voice, and, well, it'd be nice to kind of go, and raise, or check in with everybody where they are. It's probably not realistic in our handling, so we try to automate what we can, and certainly, that permits are coming up, Jennifer, all the rest of us, to learn those specific rules. I'll leave you with those permits, and say, well, you should check that lots on this one, and here you saw, you know, what they can actually dance, things they would scramble around on. You know, happily, sometimes I have time to dress those, and whether or not maybe we do, so, you know, they event that, you saw, the Colby Bar, we saw them at that last year, and we saw, who was building, with a sidewalk, he's been. But again, it's not, I don't think it issues those, you know, I wouldn't think of this, but, but that is, it's unfortunate, for some, I have that situation, but the strangle, and so I think, I agree with the general point of the chair, that I might still make, which is. You know, you know, use your judgment, but, you know, with us, feel free to, at times, you know, you know, hold back and say, you know, this is something we want to nation on, or this is something we want to address, or, or, or.
Want to be serious about that, want to.
Yes.
I, I'm not going to be here to remind you.
So, we're going to have a vacancy in offices after, after December thirty-first. So our first meeting is January fourth, and that would be election of all officers, so chair, vice chair, and third. And so, I would encourage you, if you are interested in serving one of those offices, to contact me between now and then. And also, if you're interested in not serving, you definitely know you don't want to do this, you could also, you know, you don't have to, but, just so I have a sense of who might be your. Your self nominated, or nominated for any of the offices. And again, it's generally, we're the first order of business. Oh, yes, thank you. So, uh, remember for the time of fellowship, yes?
Yes, uh, so at this point, I just want to be clear, I think we'll not be able to go in on the twelfth of December, however, we'll be able to go in on the first of January. Uh, sorry, this is about it for the membership, uh, and I hope the chair, like, doesn't want to go further, but. Um, that piece, it will mobilize the city council, uh, January, and then we'll have beautiful classes, so something we review, uh, send back to the council when they have a question for the board members. I imagine, you know, whoever's the chair or vice chair at that point, they can, uh, attend those, that council meeting or special presentation, they understand what was, who published it. How that was the board, and so on, why it's supported, um, uh, yeah, we've already prepared, it's sunrise of that, uh, while you're working together. Uh, you know, language, we've gone back and forth over a couple of times, we're exploring a very much as well. Um, with Roy and I to uh, have language and satisfy it, and this is partly because it is just making this change, it's having a transition. That goes from the nine members to seven with. Uh, so at any rate, there's back and forth, there's two events to drive general orders and general orders. Uh, together and that will be mobilized, uh, I would also expect sometime in January, possibly based on, uh, I think. There may be a revising again, I'm sure there will be, that's, uh, I also, so this board, I guess. Have another joint hearing to, uh, weigh on that, play one or two sort of dust up on the, uh, you'll avoid that, that's what, like, qualified that, or I'd argue, school proposal. Uh, maybe different, but you know, I can't say with certainty, but I would imagine that first we, January, maybe that you can forward this point of, uh, running it down. Did that, um, uh, there's another, uh, around those old limits.
So, uh, with respect to the change of the membership. Uh, just as a reminder, this is to change the membership of the board from nine regular members. With seven regular members and two associate members. And the purpose of that is so that we don't need to have. Two thirties, but we don't have six, we don't need six votes for a special permit, you only five votes. So in, in the event of a. An absence of a regular member or profit of interest refusal, uh, or vacancy. The, uh, one of, one or more of the associate members could be appointed to fill in, to sit on a special permit board. The intent of that is really to, uh, avoid any undue delays. Or applicant has to postpone because they don't feel that. Possibly implying members to vote on, uh, the matter. Uh, with that, uh, the way the. Uh, the board, this is written. It says that the board, the vacancies will not be filled. Uh, until the board, until the number of board members is reduced to seven. So we're starting out the year. Um, and so, I guess I would say I'm not encouraging anybody in, in any particular way. But if you were to be interested in being an associate member rather than a regular member. You'd want to start thinking about making, submitting a resignation, I guess. A resignation as a regular member, an application to be an associate member. About the time that we're getting to the second reading of the, uh, of the ordinances. It's just, I will remind you of that again, uh, in January. But if, if it goes to, if it goes to the first council meeting of January, which I guess would be at the tenth, that would be, or is it the third? So I would be like, right?
Uh, I would imagine it's a nine.
Yeah, so then you might possibly even act on it if you have a flagrant general.
It is, it's possible if they haven't been meeting and are under any questions or presentations or adjustments for any reason, you know, that, uh, the body for some.
So just. Just to clarify, the way the wording is, it says upon resignation or term expiration. A member, um, you have the choice, and then the way to your expiring. From what you're saying, besides I listen to you, I realize, yeah, of course. Soon as it's put into place, it resigns and become an associate member, but. If there's still. Oh, that's right, to take it down to seven members, and you immediately eligible, we, somebody. The board would be in a position to have one or two associate members at that time because of the rising age of the person who then wants to become insensible. Well, well, I could offer to.
So, can you put it's the associate member, though, they're not voting unless they need to vote?
That's right.
So they're asking meetings, they sit here, but they're more silent unless there's an absence, but.
You can, you can certainly participate by. Um, it says that the, the only, the only time that an associate member would actually vote would be when needed because of a vacancy. And only for a special permit. Uh, I was hoping to make it uh, possible for all types of words that the term understatement can. So, so, so just for a special. And again, the idea is not to reduce anybody's, um, participation in any way or form. But just to make it possible for a vote to go ahead with the regular members.
It doesn't really free you up on the first and third. Free not, but it also eliminates you, although you can participate. If something is important to you, you have to sit your lips, it is called attendance.
Well, you can say, you can just not, it's going to be, go do anything you want, say anything you want. You just are not called on to vote, but your name would not come up on the ballot.
Right, but if something's important to you, then I'll say you might want to go in a different direction without feeling like you.
I'm not expecting it, I'm not necessarily expecting anybody in the public number to do that. I just wanted to say that it would be interesting.
Okay.
And it could be a, a way, I, we, we all learn in the job here. So it could be a way for, for easier. And I, and I just to be very clear, uh, I think typically, typically the rule for, for this type of situation is. A non-voting member of the associate member, based of all the regular members present. A non-voting member can speak through the entire meeting up to the point where a motion is made. Then when the motion is made, it needs to be done, that's when, you know.
Okay, and can I, so you don't know, an associate member would necessarily know in any matter of that, they're going to be voting on that. It's just if that night, somebody's asked them that. And attention the whole time.
Right, so it's, it was somebody who, you know, regular.
Yeah.
If I, if I may, this is very similar to what was, had a Boston Landmarks Commission. There were nine voting members, but there were actually twelve members of, uh, the commission. Three were the associates, and so it just helped from, uh, making sure there was enough critical mass to attend. To be able to have votes, be able to go through, and those three associate members wouldn't know until we showed up, you know, and then be like, oh. Tonight's vote, it's going to count, and otherwise, to your point, we can provide input. Uh, up until the time that the motion's made and then not vote.
The other side of the point is, you look at an agenda item like, uh, an agenda tonight, and you knew that. The public hearing was going to be postponed and everything else was minor. And it was going to be determined pretty much tonight. They actually would get the night off. And so there is some rules there. Uh, but to Rick's point, if you knew that it was not attendance.
So, on, on tonight's agenda, there was only one special permit. And we knew, if we, if we knew that that special permit, you knew that that special permit would continue, there'd be nothing on here that was to say. You could always talk them, but you don't, you don't vote on it, therefore you could take the, you could take the night off.
But unless it's one of those, he's saying. Unless it comes to be something, you know, that, that you're very concerned about and you want to have your voice heard, even though you aren't voting. Right, but there could be, you know, a situation where you wouldn't need to show up because your vote wouldn't be foreign that night. Um, and all of this is in terms of. The, oh, I know, I understand something else about what Rick was saying. If, um, the scenario is that everybody stays on the board. And the next person to resign or doesn't ask to be reappointed disappears. Then you're down to seven members. And associate members could be recruited at that point. And they, and that's where the learning starts, I mean, you all are, for better or for worse, have been on the board long enough to learn. At least how to learn and, and how to spend your time preparing at meetings, but. Um, if two associate members were added, who have never been on the board. That's where the opportunity is to watch and learn and test out their voices and so on, um, except for the time when they actually have to vote.
Yeah, and I just wanted to confirm with, with what you just said is that you're not going to look for an alternate, uh, until you get a second.
Until you get down to second, your board comes down to second, absolutely, but that could happen. If a current member wants to resign and, and find one, uh, as an alternate.
Madam Chair, may I just add one more color commentary to this? With the Boston Landmarks Commission, the associates, they were expected to attend all meetings. In the eyes of everyone, they're full-time, you know, landmarks, commissioner members, but they just simply couldn't vote. But they, learning curve, attendance, awareness, it was an expectation and they showed up and it just was, it was a numbers game. If we didn't have enough regular members, we needed their votes, thankfully they were there, or at least who came. And all that, but that was the only distinction, otherwise they were all in, fully committed.
That's a good one, just my comment could extend this sort of, well, it's a light roll and you come if you want to or not, depending on what's on that night. You're absolutely right, it would be your full-fledged member in the sense that you have a responsibility. But if you can't make it for a meeting, it's easier to get out than if you're a full effort.
Hey, I was just going to say also, also there's a penalty to be there, because, uh, you know, maybe you will be out first line, then you can get to the last meeting now, which is very important. And I'm going to go like this one needle, so it's, it's a better reason as well, make every step of that, uh, plus spot for it. This meeting, and this meeting that I do, you know, like I said, you want everybody all, you know, nine hundred years, uh, so that it's longer, it's always there.
It's also not a life sentence, that's the other part of it, right? As, if I'm an associate, at some point I can have the expectation or hope that I'll get bumped up into permanent member status, I've, you know, paid my dues, as it were.
That's a really good point, we're not scurrying around, as we are now, to find a replacement. And, you know, I have begged and done everything I could to get people to stay on until they were replaced, sometimes it was possible and other times it wasn't. So that's a, that's another trouble, part of our cover memo that says, twice since the council. That is where it makes much more of a smooth transition to bring an associate on to. Okay, anything else we need to discuss tonight?
Good question.
Yeah.
So, uh, as, we have two daily markets, you know, it's building on your agenda for January fourth, is that? Can we continue specifically to that point, I'm sorry?
Uh, no, I, I, I haven't actually been able to look back this bit, last, I mean, it's like the, um, your visit with the board, the parking situation, I know it's also mentioned that we will face, I don't know whether that. But, uh, I believe that this because they're ready to come back.
So, Nigel, it's, they're likely to come back.
That's our data right now.
It's a mock thing.
That's a mock again.
And then we also have the ones right.
They're not carried. Uh, well, you, you've also had a stage.
Oh, yeah, the first one.
So, uh, so, before this, the one, I guess, is then. Um, but, uh, yeah, you know, obviously, you know, all praise, you know, I would, but, uh, right now we have a whole vision.
And I think that one thing is because this next meeting was the fourth. You're likely to be sending out our information a little bit earlier, so we don't get.
Yeah, good point, uh, yeah, so, uh, we'll effectively have to send it out a little earlier than global, uh, obviously we'll know it there, considering our standing here, I could go through on. Um, also under that's created because of the technical information, had it before that time. So, um, going back in the block, this is something that early, that we're out of time, we've had it, so.
Except that with, uh, one hundred State Street, um, it'd be good to leave the background, especially with the thorough commission report. Because that's what they've done delay, they're going to come in when the meeting is on. We want to have that background and see how they, how they, um, take into consideration the thorough, we should say that. Glad we're listening, John.
So moved.
Hey.
For, I second, I just would like to say, on behalf of all the planning board members, you trust to be much more eloquent than I will be, but. Our heartfelt thanks for inspiring work and devotion, dedication, uh, I think second to that. In the opinion of what you've accomplished for these, anyway, I hope you got a record.
And I'll call it all. Holden?
Yes.
Beth? Yeah, Bob?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather? Yes. Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. We are adjourned, thank you.